The Committee of the Whole. To order at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, June 26, 2024. We respectfully acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of the Sichuan ethnic. The approval of the agenda, recommendation that the Committee of the Whole meeting agenda for June 26, 2024 be approved as circulated. Councillor McCabe, Councillor Bushall, all in favor. Kate. Adoption of the minutes, recommendation that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held on June 12, 2024 be adopted. Councillor Beach, Councillor Evans, all in favor. Thank you. And we are now going to delegations. We have Municipal Finance Authority of B.C., Chief Services Officer, Betsy Young, and Credit and Compliance Officer, Lauren Kerr. You guys have the floor. Take it away. Welcome. Hello?
Yes, just unmuted. So the Chair, good afternoon, May, and committee members. Thank you for having us here today. Just quickly give a brief introduction. As you have introduced, I'm Betsy Young, the Chief Services Officer at MFA. Our team looks after all the products and services offered to our local government clients. And prior to joining MFA in February, I managed debt financing and investment management functions at the city of Toronto. I also worked at large financial institutions and consulting firms in the area of investment and risk management. Here with me today as well, I have, we have Lauren Kerr, our Credit and Compliance Officer. She has been with MFA for seven years and worked with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, proud to joining us. She's our in-house expert on the process of debt financing. Today, I'll provide a brief overview of Municipal Finance Authority and the service and product offering. Spend a couple of minutes on our investment services, then the remaining time will be focused on debt financing, which I understand is the key area of interest here today. I'm trying to move. Sorry, I'm a little stuck with the slide here.
Is it possible for us to control the slides?
Sorry, give me one second.
If you want to share your screen.
Okay, Lauren, are you able to share the screen and take control? Okay, that's, sorry, sorry about that. So let me click. So next slide, Lauren, please. So I just mentioned about today's agenda. We'll talk about briefly five minutes on overview and put investment, and then the rest of the time will be on borrowing. Our next slide. So MFA was formed in 1970 by the provincial government under the MFA Act. We are governed by a board of 40 members representing all the regional districts. This is population-based, so Metro Vancouver has 11 members, CRD has two, Fraser has two, the rest among member per regional district. The board is responsible for reviewing long-term loans requests and electing trustees. Each year, 10 of the 40 members are elected from amongst themselves to serve as trustee and work more closely with the executives. We currently have 19 employees at MFA, a balance sheet of over $10 billion, with an annual long-term borrowing issuance program of $1 to $1.5 billion, as well as pooled investment program of over $5.5 billion. Unlike other banks or financial institutions, we are a nonprofit-seeking organization. We only cover our cost, and if there's any surplus, it will ultimately be returned to our members. We aim to offer local government the most cost-effective, transparent, and relevant products, while continuously evolving and improving our operation. Our focus is also to help our local clients to reduce financial risk, enhance stability, and better serve all of you. Next. So here is quickly about the services that we offer. Our core mandate is really to provide access to low-cost financing for infrastructure, and by law, all long-term borrowing must be coming by through MFA. To complement long-term financing, we began offering our clients access to short-term financing in the late 1980s. At that time, we also started offering investment options to local governments, products that they cannot invest in anywhere else. These are also pooled investment funds, which I'm going to briefly talk about on the next slide. The MFA is also known for its contribution to local governments' financial education. We sponsor and teach debt financing course, a financial indicator course, treasury and investment management course, and many other education sessions. We can also provide support and contact in a variety of other areas, which is really customized solutions. For example, like investment services, we will provide investment policy review, also our best practice templates, and help you to build a good investment policy and process, as well as treasury management or all the cyber security guidance as well. Next. So just briefly on the pooled investment funds. We have pooled high-interest-saving account programs set up with three major Canadian banks, fully liquid, only take one day to withdraw if needed, with intention for a few months. We are in the process of having GIC through the high-interest-saving account program as well, six to 15 months. Really, we're expecting interest rate to decline, so really to help to lock in the rate. We also have a full suite of pooled investment fund solution for a variety of investment time horizon needs. Your portfolio asset mix should really also evolve as your investment horizon changes. Right now, we have over 100 local government clients with a total balance of about $1.5 billion in the high-interest-saving account program, and also 106, close to 160 B.C. municipality, regional district, and regional hospital district participating in our pooled investment fund program. That is over 75% of all B.C. local governments, with a total balance of close to $4 billion. So we are very happy, if you are interested in the future, to do a walkthrough meeting with the council or staff. If there's any questions. And very one important point is for our pooled investment fund, because we're nonprofit-seeking, and the power of pooling, we have very low market investment management fees from the investment managers. So next, I'm going to pass to Karen, Lauren, to talk about borrowing.
Thank you, Betsy. So my main role here is to work on both our short- and long-term lending products. And I understand that you may be considering borrowing to upgrade your wastewater treatment facility. And since it's been a number of years since the district last borrowed, I wanted to briefly review the concept of the liability servicing limit and how much you may be able to borrow. So each municipality, as I'm sure you know, has a liability servicing limit, which is the amount you can spend on debt servicing costs each year, so your principal and interest costs. That limit is essentially 25% of certain revenues from the prior year. So revenues that are controllable, sustainable, and ongoing, things like taxation, fees and charges, and your investment income. So every year, as I'm sure you know, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs collects your financial information and publishes a set of financial statistics on their website, which includes your liability servicing limit. And so I've got an example here for you of your limit from the end of 2022. So for 2022, you had revenue of $9.4 million for the purposes of the limit. And when you multiply that by the 25% limit, you come up with a maximum of $2.35 million that you can spend on your annual debt servicing costs. However, then you have to subtract what you're already spending to find out how much you can spend on new debt. So in this case, about $1.7 million that you can spend on new debt costs. There's also something called the approval-free zone. So whereas your liability servicing limit is 25% of those revenues, this approval-free zone is just 5% of those same revenues. So if the cost of a new borrowing, combined with what you're already spending on annual debt costs, does not exceed that threshold, then you can undertake a new borrowing without obtaining electoral approval. So unfortunately, in this case, you don't have any approval-free zone available, but it could come available if either your revenues increase or, say, an old debt servicing cost fell off at some point. So now, knowing that you can spend about $1.7 million more per year, the maximum amount that you can actually borrow is dependent on a few factors. So in this example, if you wanted to borrow over a five-year term, the interest rate would currently be about 3.88%, and the actuarial rate would be 3.30%. And in case you're not familiar with the actuarial rate, that is an estimate of how much we can earn by investing your principal payments over the life of the loan. So when you make an annual principal payment on a long-term loan, we invest that and reduce your principal payments based on those earnings. So you can see in this example, if you look at the bottom of the estimated principal payment column, you're actually not repaying $7.5 million of principal. You're only paying back $7,021,000 and change. So you don't repay 100% of principal because of that actuarial credit. And so here you can see that the payments for this would be roughly about $1.7 million, which is what we said you could afford within your limit. And so based on these terms, the maximum amount you could borrow would be roughly $7.5 million. However, things look very different if we change the term. So this is a 30-year example. And so the interest rate would currently be 4.58% for this. The actuarial rate would be 3.6% because you have a longer term. We can invest longer. We think we can earn more money, so it's a higher rate. And again, the payments would come out to be about $1.7 million, but based on these terms, you could borrow a maximum of about $27 million within your limit. And since the longest period you can borrow for is 30 years, I would say this is kind of a true estimate of the maximum, absolute maximum amount you could borrow based on the current rates. So now I'd like to move on to a high-level overview of the long-term borrowing process. So all long-term borrowing starts with a loan authorization bylaw, and it needs to include some certain things. So first, the maximum amount you propose to borrow, the purpose or purposes for which debt is to be incurred. If you have more than purpose, you need to set out how much is for each. So for example, if you wanted to borrow $1 million for a rec center upgrade and $500,000 for a paving project in the same bylaw, then the bylaw must clearly define each project and how much borrowing is allocated to it. And you also need to set out the maximum term, again, which is 30 years, absolute maximum, or the life of the asset, whichever is less. And so after you've drafted the bylaw and it's had three readings, you would next send it to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And once their staff have reviewed the bylaw, they will forward it to the Inspector of Municipalities for statutory approval. And generally, the next step would be proceeding with some form of approval of the electors. So either an alternative approval process or a sent voting or referendum. Once that has been received, you can adopt the bylaw. And following the adoption, there is a one-month quashing period where the bylaw can be challenged in Supreme Court. And following that period, you would send it back to the ministry again, and they will then determine if all of the legislative requirements have been met. So have you done your advertising correctly? Did you wait the right amount of days for your quashing period? All of those types of things. And if everything looks okay, then the inspector will issue what's called a certificate of approval. So once that certificate is issued, it's really important. That means that the bylaw may no longer be attacked, questioned, or adjudicated on in any proceeding in any court of B.C. So that gives us certainty that you have a validly adopted bylaw at that point. So as you can see, it's quite the process, and it can take up to six months to get to this point. So if you're planning a project, it's very important that you start this process early and make sure you leave yourself enough time, because it tends to take longer than you expect. Once you have an adopted loan authorization bylaw, you can also adopt what's called a temporary borrowing bylaw. And we generally encourage you to do this and to fund using temporary borrowing if financing is required. And that's because, under short-term borrowing, it's much more flexible than our long-term loans. So with temporary borrowing, you can draw down funds as you need it without locking into a specific amount or for a particular term of debt. So it's very flexible and ensures that you're not going to be locked into something that you end up not needing. So say, your project comes under budget. If you go straight to long-term borrowing before you know that, there's potential to overborrow. Also, these loans, you're only required to make monthly interest payments. And as I said, you can draw and pay down as required. So if, say, you've got a grant or something, or you had some extra surplus at the end of the year, you can certainly use that to reduce your balance before you lock into your long-term debt. And you can use this for up to five years, after which you need to either repay it or convert it into long-term debt. And so when you are complete, your project is complete, or you're otherwise ready to lock in your long-term borrowing amount, the council will need to pass a resolution called a municipal security issuing resolution and ask your regional district to consent to your borrowing. So this resolution has to have some specific information. It needs to name the loan authorization bylaw that it relates to, the amount you want to lock into long-term debt, the term that you want to borrow for, and which borrowing session you intend to participate in, because we do tend to go out to issue twice per year, once in the spring and once in the fall. So why do you have to do that? I'm sure you know, but it's because we don't lend any long-term money directly to municipalities, only to regional districts. So regional districts borrow from us and onlend to their members. And it's like this for a reason. And it's because the Local Government Act specifies that all regional district borrowing is done on its credit at large. So it's the responsibility of all of its member municipalities and electoral areas. So that joint and several liability protection is really good security, which is firstly, good for our credit ratings and also makes our investors feel very secure. So through that, we're able to secure lower rates. So in theory, if a town or city were to default on a long-term loan payment, the regional district is responsible to pay us anyways, so the investors would never be aware that that happened. It is kind of just an extra security blanket, because it's never actually happened. With that approval process that I just set out for you a moment ago, you can see that there's quite a set of checks and balances in place, including the borrowing limits and financial reporting and several trips to the ministry. So it's never actually happened that we've had a default payment, but it is just extra, extra protection. So once you pass your security issuing resolution and send it to your regional district, the regional district will then adopt a security issuing bylaw, and then they have to wait a 10-day quashing period. After that, they go back to the ministry again and apply for a certificate of approval on the security issuing bylaw. And when it's issued, the ministry sends a copy of that to us, and that's my signal that this request wants to be in the next issue. And I gather up the requests from all the members throughout the year, and then we meet with our member board once in the spring and once in the fall to review those. And generally, within a few weeks, we issue a debenture and distribute those proceeds to the regional districts, and then they onlend them from there. And so this part of the process can also take a couple of months, so just plan accordingly if you're aiming for a particular issue. Just a couple of notes about how our long-term loans work. You select the amount you want to borrow for and how long you want to borrow for, and the MFA determines how to finance the loan package as a whole, and we set the lending and the actuarial rates. The interest rate is generally locked in for the first 10 years and then refinanced in five-year increments after that. But then that can change depending on the types of requests we receive, the market conditions at the time we go to issue, and also our overall debt management strategy. So we have to think about things like what other issues we have coming up for refinancing and things like that. And to end off, I just wanted to touch, as Betsy mentioned earlier, on the power of pooling. So pooling debt and investments really does result in lower fees and issuance expenses. And our large, regular, twice-per-year debt issuance attracts investor demand. They're expecting us to come twice a year, and that really keeps our pricing competitive. So you know, while on our own, there would be kind of a lot of fish in a small pond, through our cooperative model, we really can provide a diverse suite of investment options and the most affordable local government financing Canada to all local governments in B.C., regardless of size. And through the chair, if there's time for any questions, we'd be happy to take them now.
Betsy, Lauren, thank you very much for the presentation. That was great. Council, any questions? Councillor Bailey?
Yeah, so let's just hypothetically say we borrowed $27 million. Then out of our operating revenues every year, we would need to find $1.7 million over the span of 30 years to pay for that loan back. Is that kind of getting that right?
Yes, depending on, depending on other rates at the time. That's just an estimate based on the current, the current rates and actuarial rates. But yes, essentially, the principal and interest payments would be equivalent to that.
And maybe just a follow-up. Yeah. So the length of time, I think you covered it, but is that up? I guess that would be discussed with you and with us, and we would come up with what an appropriate period of time would be?
Yes, through the chair, yes. It really is a kind of usually determined by affordability, right? You don't want to do something that potentially your taxpayers can't afford. So if it's any type of major infrastructure, we don't have a set schedule on sewers or for 30 years and rec centers or for 20 years or anything like that. Most assets are going to be useful beyond 30 years, unless you're talking about something like perhaps a fire truck or something like that.
Thank you very much.
Kelly, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just through the chair, just to echo what Lauren said is that, yeah, we're allowed to borrow up to $1.7 million in servicing, but we have to find a way to pay for that, additional fees or taxes. So that's where the dance of amortization and the length comes into play about, you know, what can we really afford to put on the taxpayer and how are we going to recoup these costs? And there's lots of different options on what that looks like. But staff would definitely be bringing that forward and looking at various options.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask something about the process, and maybe this is not quite in your ballpark, but the approval process. I guess there's, my understanding is there's two ways to do that, the simplified method, and then one to go directly to the electors for a referendum vote. Let's just say if they turn it down, then the borrowing can't proceed. Is that correct?
Yes, through the chair, yes. So generally, what will happen is, well, if you've gone to an alternative approval process and it were to fail, you do have the option to go to referendum after that. But if you go to referendum, then you can't go to an alternative approval process afterwards. So if it's turned down at the point of referendum, I think there is a waiting period before you can bring the same project forward again. I can't recall exactly what that is, maybe perhaps six months, something like that.
Thanks.
Kelly, just out of curiosity, did we borrow for the water treatment plant? How much was that?
Yes, through the chair, I want to say I think we borrowed something million. And we did do long-term debt through MFA, and we did it exactly how it is explained. You know, yeah, it was a temporary, but yeah, we borrowed. And we did the alternate approval process, and so with that process, 10%, if greater than 10%, don't support it, then it fails. I think we had 2.7% against the water treatment plant borrowing when we did that.
Yeah, okay.
14, I think.
Yeah, that was the year that I seem to recall we were elected that year. Okay. Council, any other questions? Betsy, Lauren, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, Sycamore's Community in Blooms update. Deb, take it away.
It's a speaking day, because I couldn't print my presentation, so I put it on my phone, and Brian was bugging me, and I just accidentally deleted it. So I'm just gonna win it. The beginning. Yay, this is a fun day. So the main reason I'm here today is the Beavis and Boo judges are coming July 8th and 9th. So this is the last cow leading up to them coming. So just wanted to let you know. So the company's one, I put down, this is actually supposed to be a laser trifle. We just finished it this morning. So we've got the St. John's Art and Garden Walk that we created. And, you know, like I like to think that we're always doing things to make Sycamore's better, but, you know, sometimes we rush things a little bit in terms of getting ready for the judges as well. So this is something that we'll probably build on in the future, because I think it's just, it's a great tourist thing. People want to know where your gardens are and where your art is. Sheila had already talked to you as part of this whole process. We're also doing a Sycamore's Heritage Tour, walking tour. I didn't print those out for you. Those are new too, but they're a little bigger. But kind of it ties in with this whole idea I was saying to you at the beginning of the year about our focus being activating spaces this year. We created these wonderful spaces, trying to start activating them. So as part of that, we're also, I did send an email out, and some of the staff were on it, and him and Ward were on it because just some prep, I'm getting ready when the judge is coming because of their portfolios, and it ties in well with what I'm going to be doing. So I will get back to, you know, people on the itinerary. I'm still working on that. But aside from the activating spaces where the farmer's market was obviously one of those spaces we wanted to activate, I'm also doing an angle. We have, our three categories are environment, heritage, and floral displays. So with the environment, aside from all the great things we're doing and we're going to report on with our advocacy muscles and such, I'm also doing an angle on healthy communities and the whole concept of food security and, you know, tying in with some of the things we're doing on the parks and the farmer's market and that side too, as well as our new paramedic and such. So anyway, it's, it's all good. It is going to be kind of a whirlwind, because normally we would have them for two days, and we got them for the equivalent of one day, so Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning. And so within that, you'll probably do the music in the park thing, is take them over there and, you know, like any of you guys who are around, we'll do introductions, we'll do all that. But it is going to be kind of a tight schedule. The leading crew, volunteer crew, is working hard. We're keeping in contact with Daryl and his staff. Sarah and Captain are helping me out on the submission, because I'm kind of useless at that stuff. So we're hoping to have that done by the end of this week. Other than that, I don't know if you guys have any questions, but that's kind of the plan is normal, just kind of hair straight back and kind of go crazy, so.
I love the animation. Council, any questions? Councillor Rich?
Through the chair. Yeah, again, I'm just gonna say thank you. The town looks great. And I don't know if you're doing the community garden. And I don't know if you're doing the community garden or not. I saw you over there the other day. It's crazy growing. It's super happy.
So I it's cheating a little because some of the potatoes and sunflowers came back from last year, but it all looks wonderful. So, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. But thank you. It looks really good out there. I've been walking lately and I'm like, oh, look at that. So, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Deb? Like Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, thanks, Deb. I really appreciate for everything you do and and working well with Daryl and his team, making the town look good. So, yeah, yeah, we'll get together before they come and make a plan. So thank you.
Anyone else? Deb, thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. Everyone appreciates it.
Thanks, guys.
You're very welcome.
If anybody does get an email from me in the next week or so, I'll try and keep them short and I need you to get back to me right away if there's something I need. I'll try not to ask for too much.
Okay, thanks. Okay, let's move along to zoning by law amendment by law number one zero seven three twenty twenty four, small scale, multi unit housing. Nicole, do you want to take that away?
Yeah, tell me the chair. Okay, so we're just bringing small scale unit housing back to the committee of the whole.
Actually, you're nice and loud this time, yeah.
Um, okay, we're gonna bring this one back. So we're required to advertise that there be there be no public hearing for bylaw ten seventy three twenty twenty four. It's related to the bill forty four and the housing amendments. So we're in the process of doing that advertisement and so we'll bring this to council on July. Um, this slide here is kind of our last discussion at the committee of the whole and maybe a couple PDC meetings. Just talking about all of our different residential zones, where they're quite similar, where we can do some relaxation to allow increased housing. On the next slide, what I've done today is taken the redlined bylaw and threw them in these slides and we'll just walk through it. There's not actually too many changes, nothing major. And I do want to give June a big thanks. He's not here today. But he's done a very thorough job of looking at our bylaw and has some great ideas for further amendments. She's both been talking about, but these amendments are, I would say, the bare minimum so that we meet the requirements handed down from the province. The good news is the existing bylaw did generally already allow what the province is requiring us to do. So we decided these amendments for mostly clarity. I'll just walk through those few slides. So this one is, well, just, I guess, zone renaming. We were talking about taking away the numbering, but decided that it's only just best we'll rename it from one and two unit residential to just general residential. Then we'll have general residential, small parcel, and then we just renamed Hillside Residential. And then in the bottom right there, we've added in the definition section, principal dwelling, which means a largest dwelling on the lot measured by gross floor area and serving as the principal residence. Currently, the bylaw is kind of unclear when it comes to the density descriptions, and so we'll see some of that in the later slides. We've been using the term dwelling with not too much of a difference between primary and secondary. So this adds clarity. And so in this next one, this is in the general regulations for secondary dwelling unit, we bumped floor area to not exceed forty five percent of the principal dwelling. You can't vary this by a development variance permit. So we wanted some more wiggle room there. People wanted to get a little bit a bigger additional dwelling unit on the lot. We've added F, G and H, which I think, is that the right slide? There you go. Um, I think they're pretty straightforward. And this is all under secondary dwelling units. So you must have an unobstructed passage from the public high layer road to the secondary dwelling unit with at a width of two point one meters wide and two point one meters high. And so that's more for emergency response, making sure there's a clear pathway through additional dwelling unit back there. And then G is you will get a new civic address for any type of new housing that you're or new units that you're filling in. And H is the distance. This is a new thing, a setback between the principal dwelling unit and the secondary dwelling unit. After chatting with the PDC and the committee of the whole, we felt like three meters between that primary and secondary or accessory dwelling unit would be appropriate. And then for the last one, I'll have a note here. So this is derived from the provincial guidelines, just to ensure that detached additional dwelling units don't have a shared septic with the primary dwelling unit, causing issues with shared systems and limited activity. So those were the changes under general regs for the secondary dwelling unit. Okay, country residential, minor change we had to do is clarifying density in most of the residential zones, including this one. Right now, we have two dwelling units per parcel and further define that as one dwelling unit and one sleeping unit. And so the definition of sleeping unit in our bylaw says that you may have a kitchen and bathroom. And for the province, it must. So now we're saying the density is still two. However, you can have a combo of a principal and a additional dwelling unit or a principal and a secondary dwelling unit. And then some of the other changes are where we start to see setback relaxation. So just to give some more wiggle room on the lots for additional dwelling units. Here we're going from six meters to five meters in the front. And then that's mostly facing roads. And then for the rear is five meters to four meters. So that's still maintaining some pretty good setbacks from other properties and roads. What's our next one? R one. Okay, so we've added some more clarity in the zone as well. We've increased the max parcel coverage to fifty percent after chatting about it at the PDC, just to reduce any kind of variance requests. Increase the height to eleven meters to add room for three story townhouses. One floor is about three meters and three floors is about nine. You've got a roof in there. So we're just giving ourselves some wiggle room. And then there's some change of some of the setbacks for both primary and accessory uses. So R two, yeah. Okay, so R two, mostly in the Parksville Strata subdivision area. So minor changes again for clarity, defined two as the maximum number of dwelling units. And that means one principal dwelling unit and one secondary suite. There's no additional dwelling units because these are small, small parcel lots and there's no room for additional dwelling units. But you could have the secondary suite and that's already in the bylaw. Um, so we capped or up to, sorry, up to the parcel coverage. But that might not like that parcel coverage probably have more important for additional dwelling units because you have a whole other unit on the lot. But sometimes suites can take up more space in the home and maybe you need the home to be a little bit bigger. So we've added some room there. Height was changed to eleven to match the other zones as well, and then some setback relaxation. Okay, R three, that's our next one. Mobile home, okay. Again, some minor changes for clarity, just removing that sleeping unit out of there and then having language to better define what we're already permitted to have, increase the coverage as well. And then the height is increased and likely for those single unit dwellings that are already permitted. And then some setback, really relaxation in the rear. Okay, one more slide. For R four, this is hillside, mostly in the Bayview subdivision area. So these are hillside or steep slope areas and they're typically exempt from the requirements from the province. However, we've provided some clarity and have divided what two unit, a two unit combo can look like. And that's one principal and one secondary dwelling unit. This one doesn't have additional dwelling units mostly because of topography and where like it's too steep. Where would you put it? We didn't touch parcel coverage and we just don't have to think about that at a later later revision to the bylaw. Increase the height to match the other zones. That's it for that one. R five, Old Town, added some clarity around density, maximum height and setback relaxation. Added in the general regs for R five that a secondary suite is not permitted in a two unit and multi unit dwelling. Right now, that's just due to capacity issues for sewer and water. So this can be overcome, but probably at a later date and that could be a revision to the bylaw later. So for next steps, like I mentioned, we're not going to have a public hearing for this. We're in the process of advertising that we won't be. And then we're proposing for July tenth for second, third adoption. We're doing all of that in one because quite recently we were notified that we're not required to have a K O T I approval for this bylaw. And then just as a reminder, we still have to look at other bylaws now that we've made these changes, make sure everything aligns. And we have some O C P requirements that need to be reviewed, which actually we had a pretty good seminar yesterday with the province, learning about what that looks like. That's it.
Thanks, Nicole. Counsel questions? Any comments? Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, it's through the chair. Nicole, could you just provide a copy of that redline version?
Cool, yes.
And, you know, just when you get time, just probably provide it to everybody if you could.
That was on the agenda, but of course we can provide that. Yeah, I found that to be the most.
Yeah. Here to follow. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else? Counsel Haley.
Yeah, no, I think really good job. I captured a lot of the stuff that we talked about before. I guess the only question I would have is you relaxed some of the setbacks. Do you feel like that's enough to significantly reduce some of the minor variance, you know, request that you're going to get? Because my only concern is like sometimes these small variance requests take up a lot of your time and I don't know. As long as you feel comfortable, this has given you enough flexibility, I guess, is my question.
Through the chair. I mean, we probably could have more flexibility, always keeping in mind safety. I know the fire department also has some, you know, recommendations for what they'd like to see in in emergency response. I just had this conversation with June where development variance permits are definitely our most requested application. And it is quite timely to go through some of those smaller setback variances. The ones that we have various seem to be the applications that we do tend to see. So hopefully that will alleviate it a bit. But I mean, I I think there's probably still wiggle room.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Nicole. Um, wildlife attractant by law. Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. So you can see you got sent a bunch of wildlife attractant bylaws from different towns. I've gotten a few calls from our C O, our conservation officer, who's Eric out of Salmon Arm, and then also another one out of Penitent. There's a high number of bears all over our communities. They're actually breaking right into houses. They're taking garbage. They're breaking into cars. And they're asking for help. They're they're like, we don't have enough coverage and, you know, we're going to ask towns. We are actually have done quite a bit of research on this and we are actually one of the only towns in our area that doesn't have an attractive bylaw. And so they're asking us to try to come up with one and and put it in. There's been over fifteen different bears in Sycamore's already this year, and he said that's only what's reported. And they are happy to help us write the bylaw. I've also spoken with Wild Safe, which is Olivia, but she's actually, we don't have a Wild Safe, we didn't join Wild Safe, but the person's not there anymore either. And also Jillian, which is Bear Solutions, who all really are pushing us to get this bylaw in and done well. So I'm just asking if you have an appetite to direct staff to try to draw up a great bylaw for us.
Thanks, Counsel Rich. Kelly, I'm going to defer to you. Did we not? Sarah, did we not have this on the table like a couple of years ago with the bear, with the bylaws? And the bear attractants and I can't remember. Do you remember?
Yeah, through the chair, we did talk about an attractant bylaw, but there was no direction from counsel at that time to to pursue drafting one. From my recollection.
So. Okay, let's go to Counsel McKay first. Go ahead.
Well, I thought we had a bear aware or it was for bears, raccoons and rats. I thought we had something on our Facebook. It was was more of a awareness program.
Yeah, I don't think we actually have an attraction bylaw. We do posting, yeah.
Through the chair, we don't have a bylaw, but we do communicate out. That's something that Camp and our communications coordinator has done in the past. And there was the option to participate in in Wild Safe B C in that regional program and having the Wild Safe coordinator. But counsel decided not to pursue that as well as the wildlife attractant bylaw, which was considered, I think, one or two years ago. That's not to say that we can't now. So it's really up to counsel.
Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. And what we would be looking at is is a wildlife. So it would be raccoons, rats, people put crows in when you read it's all it's all our, but it's a bylaw. So if you are leaving your dog food out in a big bag and now the raccoons are all eating it and all your neighbors are getting mobbed by raccoons, the bylaw officer would then have a chance to go there and and have a conversation on how to how to safely store your your dog food and feed your dog properly. Right now, we don't have that. So one of the issues that the C O's are having is they don't really have a lot of teeth. Unless it becomes a huge problem, then they can go in, but they can't go in and say, hey, you're breaking the bylaws here. So that's, you know, kind of, they're looking for for some backing. And we do have a huge rat and raccoon problem in Sycamore's too. And again, that will just, again, if there's someone that's kind of just continuing to offend, we can say, you know, we need your help here because bears walking around the tree streets, which they are right now is an issue where, you know, they're not aggressive, but if you become go between a sow and a cub or you surprise someone. Two days ago, we had one opening people's freezers in the tree streets and during the day, he just knew how to open the freezer, grabbed his roast and carried on. But if you surprise him, then we could have someone hurt and we don't want that, right?
Go ahead, Kelly, and then Gord.
Yeah, sorry. So really quickly through the chair, what what this bylaw also allows us to do is to issue fines for offenses to the attraction bylaw, right? So even for example, the city of Enderby's, the offense, a penalty not to exceed ten thousand dollars, so pretty hefty, right? And a jail term of not more than six months, right? So I mean, I'm not saying we have to be that aggressive. However, it gives us an opportunity if somebody is doing something that's attracting wildlife, we have the ability to actually hit them where it hurts with a penalty.
Thanks, Kelly. Counsel Bushel.
Let's through the chair. No, thank you. Siobhan, do we know our bears reported, are they all black bears or the grizzlies too?
Um, through the chair, it's it's all black bears in so far, but that doesn't mean it's going to stick that way, right?
No.
And sorry, and even through the chair, raccoons can be really aggressive too.
So, yeah, I've seen they're cute bears too. So. So I I I think that we should look at directing staff and I think the fine should be hefty. I mean, if we're doing communications and there's that many bears in the just in in Sycamore's, then that's a problem. So slapping them on the rest, if they're not following the rules and and taking care of their compost and take care of their garbage and take it, if they're not doing that, people aren't doing that and they're attracting raccoons and bears into their community, then I think it should be a hefty fine. Like I don't think we should go soft. Counsel Bushel and then Sarah.
Yes, I just I wanted to ask about the raccoons too, because down on Riverside in White Pine, there's a whole family down there and they're massive. Like they're like off the table here. They're they're little bears.
Some at your house too.
Raccoons.
Saw them.
Oh, yeah, I haven't seen any raccoons. Lots of marmots, but no raccoons.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Uh, through the chair. So through our Good Neighbor bylaw as well, it does talk about vermin. And any condition which may provide food or habitat to vermin is considered unsightly. So we do have a mechanism to enforce properties when it comes to, so house, rats, chipmunks, squirrels, raccoons, rabbits and skunks, but we don't have a by, the bylaw doesn't address larger animals like bears or other wildlife.
Counsel McCabe.
You know, I I support asking staff to look at drafting up something for counsel to consider about attractants. I noticed in some examples there that they allowed composting. I thought we were trying to discourage composting because of our rat problem. I noticed in some examples there that allowed composting. I thought we were trying to discourage composting because of our rat problem mainly. So I, I wouldn't want to see composting being allowed because we do offer those tabletop recycler things through the front desk here. Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's some raccoons in White Pine. I'm just one street over. My brother was chasing one off the deck, a big, big fat guy or gal or whatever and ran, ran right into his house.
Counsel Beach. Yeah, I, through the chair, I just, I just want to echo, you know, what Counselor McCabe has said that we, if we sort of begin using this to do a few things like make people think about composting differently, we could run another, we could maybe run another food cycler campaign if, you know, the community gets word of how nice those are and start to work on the composting and put a bylaw in place so that people know it's a serious, it's a really serious thing. If there's no bylaw, if there's no law against it, there's, it's not taken the same way, right?
So. And yeah, no one I agree and we do have raccoons up by our house too. So it's, I saw one at the window the other day, the other night when I went into the garage. So they're, they're everywhere and they're, yeah, we need to make sure that they find their space, their, their way back into the forest. Um, Gord, did you have something I want to say?
Well, through the chair, I, I just thought we, we could run it through the planning and development committee meeting and get it going. Or do you want to just get staff to start directing staff to do it?
Well, we got to bump it up to council. Doesn't it? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this, this committee would recommend the council to direct staff to look into it, I would think would be the process.
Yep. Sarah, go ahead.
The committee can direct staff now if they would like, have to proceed with drafting and then bring it forward for first reading introduction. You did, didn't you?
And Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. Also, both Terry and Eric had said they will come in and do a presentation if we want one. They're really busy right now. So it, it may be a bit, but if, you know, they, they are more than happy to come in. And those are our conservation officers. So if, if we do want that to happen there, they will make the time to come in.
Okay, so do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, are we allowed to make motions in the committee at all?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the direct staff, the council direct staff to bring forward a, a bylaw about attractants for animal, for a first draft for council to look at.
Secondor, Counsel Rich. All in favor? Thank you. Oh, okay. Moving along municipal hall, electric vehicle charging stations, Counsel Bushel.
Thank you. Through the chair, I, a while back I had a gentleman call me about the electrical charger, electric EV charger at the back of the office. And, and I didn't, I really couldn't answer his question. So I, I sent him some.
Thanks. Got the call.
So anyways, anyways, he's all, he concerned, he, he did send a letter in and it's attached and he was concerned about people, you know, not paying for the electrical charger. So I said, I told him to send an email to mayor and council, but he, turns out he just sent it to me. And so I re-initiated it. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring it up and we can have a quick discussion about it and see where we go. Thank you.
Counsel Evans, Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, he emailed me about a month ago and I told him to bring it up to council. I'm glad he did. And, and I get what he's saying. I, I saw some, I saw somebody who works in a business town pulling the parking lot plug in their car and then walk to work. So I, I get where he's coming from. I did tell him that it is a service to, to build tourism and that we work a lot when, when people that are stopping in town can charge their vehicles. Just, that's what I, my interaction is with him. I get his point.
Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, we have a sign, thank you through the chair. We have a sign saying, you know, two hour, you know, charge for two hours. And so I was watching on Facebook there and somebody did the calculations to convert that to a cost and it's, and it looked, looked accurate to me. And so it works out about for a two hour charge is about thirty six cents. And their, their, the citizen's concern is like, should we be spending tax dollars on letting people? Are we, should we be giving away electricity for free? And I think staff said that they were going to look into what, what that accumulative cost is to the district. So maybe through the chair, if staff's had a chance to figure out some cause.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking at the usage for, because we don't have it monitored just for our charging stations. Our charging station isn't exempt for that, but just looking at the overall cost of electricity for this building. We couldn't see any like large increases from when that charging station had been put in from now. Nothing crazy. Daryl wants to.
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit through the chair. I know initially when we were asked to explore putting one in, we did, we priced them out. We were curious about what that would do to the billing. It's a little bit complicated in that BC Hydro charges us based on a peak time through the day. So once you, you charge a vehicle and you you up the
Right.
The requirement for power, it's a bit of a surge for a vehicle, this is my understanding, that would tip your peak a little bit higher. So your rate would be higher for that day. So it kind of gets lost in, in the overall. I don't think there's a huge impact to our, to our power, like overall, over time of having it. Unit, the first unit cost about $10,000 and then we had to get everything put in for the power to run it to the, the electrical room. We're probably into it for about fifteen each for those two units. They're not able to be converted over to pay as you go. They'd have to be replaced. We'd have to put new units in that could do that. And then there would be the whole networking and the capturing and the finance piece on this end. So it'd be a pretty good investment to have to switch them over.
Counsel Beach, do you have your hand up? Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I, I had to actually, he called me as well and I chatted with him, but I, I get his point. I, I agree with his point. It should be monitored. It should be, should be tracked. Just, you know, we don't give away free gas cards. But for, for people to come to town for tourism point of view. So I, but, but you know, if it's going to cost even more to change it over, that's not going to be worth it either. So it's a little bit of a peckle there, but I, I totally agree with what he's saying and the principle behind it. Because I think we're past the stage where we have to encourage EVs and provide them free electricity and all this. I think we're past that in terms of that development and, and I don't really think it's a huge tourism driver either. But you know, maybe what we could do just as a path forward is, is get a ballpark estimate or maybe already have that. And then that kind of makes the decision for us in terms of what it would cost for us to actually track it. Or, yeah, I, I'm just trying to think of path forward because I think his, his point is well taken. I understand what he's saying. Yeah.
Counsel McCabe and Daryl.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I, I think it, if that number is accurate, that thirty six cents for two hours of charge, not allowing for that peak difference and a surge, whatever. As opposed to the administrative costs of tracking those costs and invoicing the people or charging those people for, to use that or there's a key card or I, I think it would cost more to try and recover the cost. I, I think it would cost more to, to try to recover the cost and we recoup all the costs is, is my gut feel on that. And I think it still is an advantage for some out of town people come there and charge. Yes, it's misuse. You always have a, a bad apple in a barrel, but you can't dictate if you round that one bad apple.
Daryl, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to jump on Counsel Bailey's comment about the timing of, of the impetus to put these in. There weren't chargers around. So it was Salmon Arm or, or AB Revy. And I know Malquart came online after that, Best Western, they're, they are popping up. And, and we do have a fleet now that requires on this end as well to be charged. And then Eagle Valley as well. So I mean, just a suggestion, if we wanted to put a sign up and say authorized use only, that's, that's quick and easy as well.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counsel Bushel.
Through the chair. Yeah, I, you know, I kind of agree with Daryl. We do have the ones at the Shell that I see are never used. And, and there's also probably going to be some new ones at the new Shell, the mountain park building. So they'll, you know, there'll be some there. Best Western still has one and I'm not sure if Husky has any, but you know, there is some around now, then they do have an option to go plug in. Maybe this is more convenient, I know, but it would, you know, for the taxpayers, I guess, you know, it would solve our problem just saying exclusive use for the EV, you know, for Malcolm's group and, and district vehicles. I thought.
Counsel Rich. Through the chair and are we able to figure out actually, because there's different, I don't have electric cars. I don't know much about them, but different levels of chargers. This one's a slower one. Is there, and I saw that on Facebook too, Counsel McKay. But can we actually find out what it takes to charge a car? And then like, so we know that. And then we would also know like, you know, how many kilometers are going on our electric fleet. I would assume that Eagle Valley Transportation knows what their kilometers are. So we can just see what we're spending and I think that's more what this person is looking for is just to see, you know, how, you know, if it's $5,000 a year, that's one thing. If it's fifty and we don't really know, right? We, we just don't know. So you know, maybe that's something, they, they seem like, you know, you take kilometers and times it by, if it's thirty six cents a kilometer or whatever, right? It shouldn't be too hard to break down the numbers because the cars like your cars, Daryl, and your cars don't charge anywhere else, right? So we should be able to find out what we're spending pretty quickly.
Counsel Beach. Yeah, through the chair, I, I agree that we, we really don't need to have these available to, for public use. There's enough chargers out there now that they can access them and, and this is a good point made by a community, a taxpayer that, you know, why would we be offering free charge and also to Counsel Rich's point, we need to keep track. We absolutely need to know what, what it's costing, what, what we're using. And the fact that our fleet is all electrical. So we need it. And that would be my worry that when we need it, it's going to be public use on it or something like that eventually. I don't know. I don't think.
Thanks, Counsel McKay.
Yeah, I don't know if I should even excuse myself if I'm in conflict or whatever, but I am president of Eagle Valley Transportation. I'm also volunteer driver, but and, and we do track, we do have spreadsheets on how many kilometers each vehicle puts on weekly, monthly, whatever. But we can't associate a cost of that because we don't know how much it's costing to charge the vehicle. And I think from staff, that's, that's hard to isolate because it's just bumped into the overall electrical bill. And like I said earlier, I think it would cost more to try and figure that out and track it than it currently does using it. And just for clarity, Eagle Valley Transportation has a, a ten year license of occupancy with the district of Sicamous to use for free. So the public knows that and because Eagle Valley Transportation is providing a service that nobody else does in the community to help help seniors age in place by giving them access to healthcare.
Counsel Evans.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm, I get to use one of those cars to take seniors to appointments as well quite a bit. And it's a great thing and those folks are citizens of Sicamous. So I think it's a wonderful thing. I would like to echo the idea that I think the sign is the best option. Authorized use only for District of Sicamous and Eagle Valley Transportation. And I think that would take care of the bulk of the problem if someone sneaks in there at midnight. And you know, let's, the bad apples do that. But I think that for now, that's the best thing to do.
Yeah, I agree. Counsel McKay.
Yeah, I agree. At times are changing like Counsel Bailey says, there are other options out there that wasn't before or as much. And, and, and the district's converting to fleet for our, our footprint. So yeah, I, I support putting, putting a sign up there for authorized use only or whatever staff considers appropriate on the sign.
So staff, can we, what would you like from us? Would you just like to create a sign or do you want us to give you some directions?
Is to put up signs for authorized vehicles only. Yeah.
Okay, a motion.
A motion's ideal.
Yeah, so absolutely. Okay, so we will direct staff to put up authorized, authorized vehicles only.
Yeah, and the electric charges.
Can I get a secondor? Thank you, Counsel Rich. All in favor and opposed? Okay, we're good.
Who was the first around now?
I was wondering that too.
Oh, that was me. I, I did it.
Okay.
I just rolled it out. We're kind of looking at each other. So okay, let's, let's go. Okay, moving right along, we're going to go to counselor reports. Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, let's make some things up. I attended the workshop with the SWAT team over the healing center. That was a really good evening. So that was neat and I think that's about it for me. I'm going to say Shea Weber is being inducted into the hockey Hall of Fame. There are only three hundred and six hockey players in the hockey Hall of Fame. So huge for Shea and his family and for our town. And my other shout out is we had two teams of our players, U elevens, under elevens and under thirteens in two different tournaments. Both did very well and our U elevens came home with gold. So shout out to the kids and shout out to the incredible coaches who have spent a huge amount of time with our, our baseball teams. Thank you. Counsel Bushel.
Through the chair, I've been just fairly busy at work, but I did attend the SWAT scene presentation for the medical center. That was very interesting and great to spend some time with him. Also, we had the breakfast with the mayor, the chamber of commerce hosted and G and G, at G and G's. That was really well attended and great function. Good job, Colleen. Thank you. And then also planning development, Nicole and June have been keeping us very busy with lots of planning stuff and there's still lots of, lots in the works and lots of development and taking, fielding lots of calls too. So thank you.
Good, thank you. Counsel McKay.
Yeah, thank you. I represented Sicamous at Aboriginal Day in, in Enderby. And, and that was a surprise. It was quite a formal process. They had flags and they had a big parade going into their powwow center there. And it was, it was, it was an honor to just, you know, there was maybe two fifty, three hundred people there. So I did that and breakfast with the mayor and that's about it.
Thanks, Counsel Beach. Yeah, I attended the interagency meeting on the eighteenth here in council chambers and I just want to say on behalf of all of us who, who do attend interagency meetings once a month, having it here is wonderful. Thank you very much. And the technology support is very helpful. Just a little note, we, that model of interagency started in two thousand and six and has been going ever since then and was first of its kind, but has now served as a model for other communities. So thank you very much. And I also regretted missing that, that you attended, did a first aid course instead, which is always handy and did though enjoy the meal, meal and the presentation on the healing center in Enderby. And I thought that the small but very enthusiastic group was, had great ideas and sounded really excited about it. So.
Thank you, Counsel Bailey.
Planning and development committee meeting and breakfast with the mayor. Thank you. Did a great job. Very well attended. It was a packed house by the way. So once again, you drag in the crowds, Colleen. So appreciate that. And yeah, just, just some constituents back and forth. And I see we're all getting plenty of emails on a certain other subject as well. So.
It was a sad start to our last week. I would just, we sent out a Sicamous statement regarding the death of Joanne Jackson. And her life was taken on Wednesday, June the nineteenth, which is a tragic loss for our community and we just don't. her life was taken on Wednesday, June the nineteenth, which is a tragic loss for our community and we just don't want to see those things going on in our community. So our thoughts and our prayers are with her family and friends at this time. Turning the page to today. He, the person Scott McDonald, who was arrested temporarily then released, has was arrested yesterday and has been approved for charges against him. So he is currently in jail and so our community can rest a little easier that he is off the streets now. So and waiting for charges against him. So which will be filed. So that's a bit of good news for our community. And I went to, I was at the breakfast with the mayor too. Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Chamber of Commerce. That was a good event. And yeah, it was it was great to see the support, like it was a packed house. And it's always good when people I love it when people come out and want to hear about what's going on in the community, not, you know, complain about what's going on in the community and not step in and listen to what's going on, but they showed up to see what's going on in the community and it was well attended and people were I'm quite positive about everything that's going on. So hats off to this council and the council before us. I frankly, I think we're doing a really good job and I hear about it quite often. So I'm happy about that. Last, I've had a really busy week. Attended the healthcare center with a few of the counselors at Splat Scene and went over the presentation. And yes, I agree with you, there was some very excited. Yeah, yeah, really happy. I had attended the COW meeting at CSRD and the CSRD board meeting last week. Also attended a meeting for the North Okanagan Hospital Association or District. And I'm sorry that I missed the the
Celebrations.
Celebration. But it was, it's very busy. It's busy in my world as well and this last couple of weeks have had so many meetings stuffed into every corner. So there are some things that I had to to back away from. But that was it. It's been a busy weekend. We are going into summer, so it's going to continue to be super busy and our town is going to be coming alive. And I'm looking forward to this long weekend. Sounds like there's a lot going on, so July long looks like fun and fireworks. Sarah? Did I miss you?
That's okay. I like listening to other people talk.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm not offended.
Okay, that's good because I did not mean to miss you. Go ahead.
It's okay.
What's going on in your world?
It was a busy eight days. I loved having that wonderful meal with the Splat scene council about the healing center presentation and interagency early years meeting. Mayor's breakfast, the food was great, the crowd was great, the mayor was great. And yesterday I went, saw Jamie and Danielle at the kids' club farewell. And I want to thank Jamie for hard work over the last seven, eight years, providing our kids with a great after school program that's now going over to our wonderful daycare, which is just amazing. I was over there again today and I tell you, the yard looks awesome, the new playground equipment, the kids are just excited. What a great staff. I spent full day Saturday with two of their staff, with Sandra and welcomed them to town. I met two new families to Sicamous, one from Prince George, one from Fort St. John. Love it when good people move to town. And one of them's got a three year old, other couple is retired. That's exciting. And yeah, busy with library stuff coming this next week. We're going to do a review of our CAO. So and I've got the schwag to prove it. Which I'm sorry, I threw my lid at you on accident.
Thanks, Counsel Seven. Okay, we'll go into public input. Do we have any questions in the gallery or online? Deb?
Let's start my presentation. Just a reminder, we're starting our regular farmers market a week Friday, so July fifth. I've got even more vendors besides us. So looking at recently, but as usual, get the word up, get some folks, it'll keep going, so.
That's excellent. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay, well then let's adjourn this meeting. Recommendation at the council, regular council meeting for June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four be adjourned and the time is two fifteen. Can I get a mover? Counsel Rich, Counsel Bushel, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. We're going to take a